Brian McDonald has stepped down. Richard Peterson.
Here.
Jay Durod.
Here.
David Grant couldn't make it. Review and acceptance of minutes from November 2nd.
I make a motion, they be approved as drafted.
Second.
Do I have a vote?
All in favor? Unanimous.
Chair is not here, as I said, he stepped down. Just, uh, he's just so busy with the refereeing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that he just, he feel like he could keep doing it. So, we've put out the ad, we've got several applications already. And, uh, council will make a decision before the next count, for the next planning board meeting we'll have.
Cause he left the board altogether?
Yes.
Oh.
Stepped down. Yeah, um.
Did he give a reason by any chance?
I just told you.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't recall clearly. What was that reason?
Because he referees.
Referees all the sports?
Well, he does football, volleyball, and.
Not enough sports?
Yes.
Wow. Well, we'll miss him.
Yeah.
Yeah. Basketball is too much for him.
I guess. I was trying to figure out, okay, sports, well, we can kind of work around that. But no, not when you're doing them all.
I imagine lacrosse and football is a fair amount.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Yes. Um, so, code enforcement report. Waiting on the big announcement that we're supposed to be hearing from all oceans. They said the first quarter, so we've got a month left. So, hopefully, we're gonna hear something and then, according to the newspaper, it's supposed to be positive. But I have no knowledge of what this announcement's gonna be, so hopefully, it's something good.
Are they still operating the office here on Main Street?
I think there's somebody in there occasionally, but it's.
Well, I know, I walk by there just about every day, and I have yet to see anyone in there. And I saw the same announcement you did about they were gonna have someone in there so many hours a week.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I have yet to see someone in there.
Well, if that was, that's what I was asking, if that was busy, I'd be really.
Again, maybe I'm walking by the wrong hours to be doing it too.
Yeah.
Have they involved in some legal litigation with their designers and all that type of?
That's what it said in the newspaper, yeah, so.
That's come time for five years.
Well.
I hope not.
Hopefully not, because the investors are invested in a lot of big operations besides just this. So, hopefully, they can handle a lawsuit dealing with whatever and still move forward. But like I said, we'll have to wait and see what the announcement is, I don't know. Trying to think if there's anything else really to report. Guess not at this time.
Has anyone else come to you recently with any proposed plans or?
Uh, nothing in the works. There's, uh, one company that keeps asking about solar, um, but they want to do it in a zone that's not allowed.
Yeah.
And I've told them that the council's made it pretty clear, they don't want to do contract zones for that, so.
Yeah. Nothing.
Nothing. At this time anyways, um, so, limited public forum. Seeing no one. Uh, there's no unfinished business and there's no new business. Uh, so, administrative business, election of officers.
I would like to make a motion that Steve Bishop be elected as the new chair of the planning board.
I'll second that.
Congratulations, Steve.
He hasn't accepted.
We haven't had a vote either.
I guess I should have asked him, but will you, will you accept it or collect it?
Well, George says so, so, uh, I, uh, I don't wanna tell him no. So, I will accept, yes.
All right, and we have a vote.
You must have a quorum, don't you, with that?
Yes.
Four of us, huh?
Yep.
Can bring Chloe in if I need to.
So, we need to also elect a secretary. Steve Feit has been the secretary the last couple of years. The secretary, I don't know why we call it a secretary other than that's what it says in the ordinance. Essentially, it's deputy chair. They basically run things if the chair can't be here or whatnot, they're the backup.
Let's see.
So.
Well, then I will nominate Jay Durod for that position.
And I'll second that.
Should be our deputy chair, fill in if Steve can't be here?
Yes, I guess so.
All right.
I think you'd be awful good backup.
I think so too.
Steve's usually.
From that, from that one year, from that one year we had, I remember you're pretty good backup.
What's that?
You always were a heavy, heavy legal rep.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Uh, we gotta have the vote.
He's accepted, so.
Yep, all in favor?
There we go. Done.
Okay, um.
That was weird. I know.
Yeah.
It was. Thank God, we got something on.
So.
X-K land use coming up.
So, ordinances that are, um, have to be reviewed by the planning board before they can be approved. Anything that's in the zoning ordinance or the flood management ordinance. So, this is, uh, this came about completely because of the situation going on on McDonald Street. If you haven't seen it or aren't aware of it, um, but it's right on the corner of McDonald and Noel Drive. It's actually Noel Drive where the issue is. There's a tenant there that's been running a perpetual yard sale since July. There's stuff piled everywhere. I did issue a notice of violation, well, I started by trying, talking with him. We had very nice conversations, but he never follows through with what he says he's gonna do. He tells you he's gonna clean it all up and everything's gonna be great, but nothing ever changes. I issued a notice of violation based on the fact that he was running a home-based occupation, without a license, and the fact that a home-based occupation does not allow any of your goods to be stored outside. That was the best thing I had to go on other than public nuisance, um, I think I included that in there. But, we don't have anything in our ordinance about yard sales and we don't really have a big problem with yard sales. But, we need to have that teeth in the, in the ordinance so that a situation like this comes up, I have something to lean on.
Has there been a lot of complaints from the neighbors?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah?
It's, every week I get a new complaint from somebody that lives on that road or drives up that road or the police department, fire department, I mean, everybody is called.
Does.
But what's going on there? Is it, are they selling and then replenishing?
That's what I was gonna ask, good question.
Or are they?
Oh, no, he is getting new stuff daily as.
Okay, so, does he have a sales tax number?
No.
You sure?
I would bet my life.
So, he would be in violation of main sales tax law?
Probably, yeah.
Oh, I mean, if he's replenishing the items.
It's all secondhand stuff.
It doesn't matter, if he's replenishing, he's running a business.
Well, that's a good point.
Well.
Well.
I don't know if that's something I really can go, I guess I could turn him in, but I can't really.
I'm just saying, if you want somebody to clean something up, you look at all your opportunities to have somebody.
He's got an outdoor secondhand shop.
He's, he's running the retail business?
Yeah.
He's probably also just trying to survive the only way he knows.
Well, we understand that, so.
I understand that, and I've tried to work with him. I've told him, you can continue to do what you're doing, but you need to do it in your house and get a home-based occupation permit, and then there won't be a problem. But piling it all outside.
Uh, is he a, does he own that property or is he a tenant?
No, it belongs to Curtis Wood.
Oh, okay.
And I've tried to talk with him.
I was gonna say, where's the landlord following this?
He's been paid with COVID money for four or five months in advance, he has no interest in doing anything. So.
What? Okay.
He told me to take him to court, so I got permission from the council, and that's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
So, um, but that, that's not really what we're here to discuss tonight.
Is this an older gentleman, by the way?
No, he's younger than I am.
Oh, okay, never mind. All right, moving forward.
And, and perfectly healthy and capable of working. So anyways, the yard sale ordinance, or language added to the ordinance regarding yard sales. I changed the definition to be a little bit more specific. The reason, and I, the reason I put five items or more was because I didn't want somebody that's trying to sell a washing machine or a used car or something and they park it on the road to be considered a yard sale. That being said, as I told the council, I don't necessarily want laundry machines sitting out there for four months either, but, but you know.
Any sort of like state standard or state directive for yard sale, any sort of, uh?
No. No, I looked at, I looked at what a lot of other towns are doing, and that's where some of this language came from.
Yeah.
Actually, the town of Holden has a really good yard sale ordinance, it's, it's actually way more strict than this, but, um, I, I did borrow some language from that among some things. And the council, I, the 24.2 where it says, uh, may conduct more, no more than three yard sales. It said three, uh, from any location in a, in a year. They asked me to change that to six, and, and that's fine with me. It's really irrelevant how, what number you put there, because it's not something I'm gonna be keeping track of on a spreadsheet somewhere. It's, it's only if a situation like what's going on arrives where I have, I mean, I could look at his Facebook post from back to June 25th and show you his yard, that it's been going on all this time. So, in a situation like that, this just gives me, it gives me teeth, it's not something I'm gonna be running around going, hey, you had four and you're only allowed three.
I'd like to make a recommendation, instead of three days, I think four days.
We changed it to six.
No, 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 I'm, oh, am I missing something or, of course, entity may conduct more than six yard sales?
Yes.
Six yard, but I'm saying up at the top of that, the one before that, it's gonna three consecutive days. I, I think four, when you get a holiday and you get people putting stuff out there to get things prepped on a Friday, you know.
I'm fine with that, that's what you'd like.
Well, I'm, I'm just bringing it up, trying to think it through.
It actually came up during the council meeting too, and I offered to do four, and they didn't, they didn't really care either way.
I agree with that.
Again, it's not like I'm gonna be out there going, wait, it's day four.
But I'm thinking about my next door neighbor, Georgia, and, and I'm going, let's see, Georgia does her sales, and okay, and, and.
Yeah.
Pardon me, Georgia, if you're watching or listening, okay? But, uh, that's what I was thinking is, is the only thing on that, that was all.
Everybody good with changing it to four?
Somebody on the council is gonna be doing more than six this year, too, that's why they wanted six.
You're probably right.
I would say four would be appro, I mean, the whole purpose of a yard sale is very temporary.
It is.
Short-term.
That's right.
Okay, change it to four. Uh, the other things I put on there were, um, no merchandise may be placed on public right-of-way, street, road. All merchandise must be displayed in a sufficient distance from the roadway in order to avoid obstruction, view of traffic hazards. I mean, just pretty common sense, though. All unsold yard sale merchandise remaining on the site at the conclusion of the yard sale, to include items that are sold to purchasers, must be removed within 24 hours. So, that's to keep them from just leaving stuff set up there.
Yep.
Perpetually. And then, the property owner or person conducting the yard sale must assume responsibility for parking. So, automobiles or pedestrians may not be allowed to impede traffic on any adjoining roads. If traffic on any road is impeded or a dangerous condition develops on the road, law enforcement officials or town officials may immediately suspend or close the sale for the balance of that day. And as I told the council, I had to do that once in Orland. Sheriff called me and said there was a dangerous situation and asked me if I could go over and deal with it, and I did. I went over, the homeowner was, they said, yeah, they, we can see that the issue is developing, we didn't know, we didn't anticipate this. So, we basically just took down the yard sale signs for a few minutes. We got some signs that said no parking on this side of the street.
Right.
We got some cones so that they wouldn't park on the hill, cause it was a blind hill, and anyways. We got it fixed, she reopened, everything was good. That's basically what I would get at there, and again, I think that language came from Holden, but, um.
The language at the back, at the bottom of it, it says, uh, I'm just laughing, cause Jay's gonna empathize for this. Uh, town officials may immediately suspend or close the sale for that, for the balance of that day. Well, I can tell you, if it's a three-day yard sale and you tell them that they can't do it on Saturday, the same thing will be started and repeated on Sunday. So, the end of that language until safer conditions are, are.
Right, well, cause that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
The reason we would shut it down was not to shut it down. I mean, if, if it was 10:00 in the morning, the goal would be to get them back up and running as quick as possible.
Right.
If, the goal is just to make it safe.
Right.
So, um.
If we could look at that, just, the idea isn't to close it down and say, you're a problem, but just.
So, should I put from the balance of that day or until it's made safe, or the safety situation is resolved, or?
Or until safer conditions are implemented.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that, something to that effect, whatever you think.
That's a good idea.
Something to that effect.
It's not asking much.
No.
At all.
And again, this hasn't been, you know, a big issue.
Nope. But it could be.
All depends on whose house wants, who wants to have a yard sale where, just their location might just be a bad spot. Just a little bit of signage would be fine.
Anything else that you wanna see added or changed in that?
I think you'd be great, let's move.
And what I've written on Chilwell Lake Road lately?
We, yes.
Five of them out there on the corner and just continually junk.
I know.
Yeah.
And that was another one that I inherited that I'm.
But several other people have kind of started the same thing with fewer pieces, but.
Um, where are the one on the corner of Cross and Silver Lake? It's, and then obviously, the old.
One down on the dog.
Yeah.
In front of the big corner.
Yeah, so, what's?
But in between there now, those houses in between on that side of the road, everybody's got some stuff out by the road now.
Okay, I'll have to go out and take a look. I don't typically go that way, so unless I'm out there for something else, I don't.
Take a ride out.
I guess I'll need to.
I go by it every day.
So, the other ordinance that we were gonna discuss, I think it's on, it is on the agenda, was revising the medical marijuana dispensary language in the ordinance. The council voted to table that, um, until we have a chance to, um, figure out exactly what it is they want and where they want it. So, we can discuss that if you want, and I can make a recommendation to them to, on how to proceed with it, but, um.
Well, I remember when we discussed it before, I think I was the only one that was sort of in favor of it, because I was looking for, looking to it as a business opportunity for the town. But, the council at that time said, absolutely not, we're not gonna do it.
Was that for adult use though, or was that for medical?
Um, I think it was just.
Okay.
What was the, what was the date that that ordinance was passed? Cause I believe that ordinance was implemented before it was even legal, when it was strictly in the, in the phase between.
So, in 2011, they put in language to the ordinance that allowed, um, medical marijuana dispensaries to be on the downtown district with a note that says this land use is limited to street-level store of any commercial or non-commercial principal structure fronting on Main Street. And it also was allowed in the C1 district, which is US Route 1.
Anything in there about filtering the air?
Well, no, but that would be growing rather than settling.
Well, I don't know, you go by this one.
And they're growing.
Oh, they grow.
They got a big grow.
Oh, is that the grow across the street?
Yes.
Oh, my God, sometimes you go through there and you go, oh, my God, this stinks.
Right.
They don't charge you to go through, do they?
I'm sorry, folks.
You feel better after you drive past there?
I, I haven't tried.
I haven't tried. I haven't taken the morning.
Stop me at a bag of munchies.
After.
So, this came up, so.
Oh, you guys, cracker me up today.
That was in 2011. In 2017, uh, the adult use recreational became approved by the state. And then, uh, that was dealt with again in the ordinance, so, excuse me, I'm gonna sneeze. I'll just talk about marijuana. So, um.
Oh, Lord.
In the ordinance, Jeff referred to it as retail marijuana, um, because he said that's what the state definition of, of it was. Uh, but most people refer to it as medical, I mean, I'm sorry, recreational or adult use. But in our ordinance, retail marijuana means adult use or recreational, so.
So, says that by what?
The definition in our ordinance says that, says that retail marijuana stores means.
Okay.
The adult use kind.
It flat out says that.
It's, it is confusing, and that's one of the things that, cause people look at that and they think you can't sell marijuana because it says retail stores that sell marijuana are not allowed, but it's not all retail, it's retail of adult use. Retail of medical marijuana is allowed.
Okay.
So, a fella called a couple of weeks back, he's a lawyer, didn't tell me who his client was, but they're looking at putting a dispensary on Main Street, and I said, you can't do that, Bucksport hasn't opted in. And he said, yes, you have. And I said, how is that? He says, your ordinance says it's allowed. And I said, well, I don't think so, cause I looked at retail marijuana store not allowed. And he says, yeah, but it says dispensary for medical marijuana is allowed. And I'm like, oh, okay. So, I was a little confused, um, talked with Sue, she says, no, the council definitely doesn't want that. The intent when they passed that no retail marijuana store was that we wouldn't have it. And I said, well, if that's the case, the ordinance wasn't updated to reflect that. She goes, well, I was there, I remember what they said. And I said, okay. So, I reached out to Jeff to try and find out what he knew about how it happened and to find out if that was a mistake or if that was intentionally left. And he was insistent that the council was 100% unanimously for medical marijuana being sold on Main Street and that that was not a mistake and that's the way it should stay, hasn't been a problem to.
Are the minutes in the meeting in, in the record?
Uh, the minutes are very vague of the council meetings, and there's no video of that meeting. The video of the 2017 meeting is available. And the council, the council knew that he was talking about adult use. Because Jim Morrison was in the back of the room and he stood up and said, you shouldn't be calling it retail marijuana, you should be calling it recreational. And Jeff said, no, the state definition says retail, so we're gonna call it retail, which is fine. I don't, I don't really care, but, but the point of that is that the council knew what was being discussed. They knew it was recreational adult-use marijuana that was being discussed that night. Because Jim made it a point of telling them that retail means recreational.
Right.
So, and then I believe, cause Peter Stewart's the only one that's still on the council, that was on the council in 2017. I'm trying to remember now who said it.
That's right.
Anyway, one of the councilors said, but medical marijuana is still allowed, and Jeff said, yes. And they didn't say, well, we wanna change that. So, I'm left going, well, I don't know, it sounds like they're okay with it, but they, they're 100% against recreational. And I'm like, what's the difference?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna ask, how do you distinguish between medical and recreational? I mean, is it the person coming in and buying it?
Would have to have a medical card to buy it.
Medical ones, like, if you don't have a medical card, you can't even go into that place on Verona. You're not, you're not allowed in there.
Oh, you gotta have a medical card to go in?
You're gonna have the medical marijuana card to go in there. I can go in as the code officer on official business, but that's it. So, I went in there to inspect that place when it, before he opened it.
Yeah.
And I haven't been in since.
Okay.
But, yeah, he, he taught, told me a lot about how that all works and what he has to, you know, cause somebody could go in there undercover and, and you'd better have the card if you let them in the door.
Same products though, right?
Pretty much, yeah. So, but the laws and the licenses and stuff by the state, it's different. So, um, in any case, so I went to the council Thursday night, and I really don't have any agenda. I don't care one way or the other. I personally, the one on Verona hasn't been a problem, the one in Orland hasn't been a problem. People thought they were gonna be a problem, but they haven't. My only real thinking is that, I don't know if we want people that come to Main Street and get an ice cream and then walking down Main Street, or come off a cruise ship and the first thing they see is a neon pot leaving a store window, you know? I just don't know if that's.
Might be an attraction, maybe all the people on the cruise ship also.
Maybe, I don't know.
Maybe they'll stick around, they ain't too long.
It's just my opinion, and everybody has an opinion, right? You're all opinion here.
So, are we having to amend the?
So, so I went to the council Thursday night to try and get a feel for how they felt about it. And they pretty much all were, I don't know if I'd say unanimous, but it's, it was, the majority of them were, yeah, I got no problem with it, but maybe we wanna talk about where and how, and definitions, and, you know, maybe, I don't know if they wanna change that to say something other than retail, or if they wanna change. So, like I said, it says on here, it has to be street-level, um, structure fronting Main Street or US Route 1, and then there's some language in 13 that, uh, I see watching Mercy Town. It says a bunch of restrictions here. Must comply with the following standards, onsite planting, growing, and processing of medical marijuana may not be conducted. On-site consumption or smoking of medical marijuana may not be conducted. May not be located within 500 feet of the closest property line of any school. The only one that would be the Reed School, um, and I don't know how close that actually is to Main Street, I don't, I haven't measured it.
Probably more than 500 feet.
You think? It might be, I, I don't know.
It's just about there, I bet.
He's the surveyor, so he probably is right, but I don't know.
The Christian Academy on Central Street, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
I think it is still running, but very, I don't think they've got a lot of students.
Well, they've had like 12, so it hasn't, hasn't changed much, I don't think, over the last couple of years.
So, but again, I don't know if that's 500 feet from the Main Street or not, you have to measure it, but, um.
Oh, I bet it is less than 500 feet.
He actually may have more, I hear him out there playing during break time, you know, recess, they may have more than that.
Medical marijuana and related paraphernalia are the, may only be dispensed to patients and primary caregivers. Electronic security system must be installed. System must include video cameras and a panic button, system must notify the police department of unauthorized breach of security. Business hours only between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. That's a big restriction. Any business advertising sign for a dispensary is subject to compliance with the sign ordinance. But there's nothing in the sign ordinance that says anything about them. I am updating the sign ordinance right now, I don't, I didn't add anything for this, I could. Seems kind of funny that sign ordinance isn't part of the zoning ordinance, but it's, no, um, it's its own separate thing.
So, what kind of time do you need to figure that out, as far as what's gonna be appropriate for that? Does, does the sign ordinance need to be amended before this one to get?
I don't know. I mean, the council, we crammed a lot into that one hour, and so we, we didn't really spend as much time as we should have probably discussing this. But they, um, they discussed a moratorium that would be put in place to stop anything. Um, but they, um, they discussed a moratorium that would be put in place to stop anything new from coming in until we have a chance to, um, do anything further.
Yeah.
Um, well, until we have a chance to figure out if we wanna change anything. I guess what I'm trying to find out tonight from you guys is, do you see a need to change any of these rules, or are you fine with them the way they are?
I think the language needs to be more specific. There's a question in the definition, talking recreational, medical, adult use, et cetera. If there's a question with that, that leaves a wiggle room for a lawyer to call you up and say, yeah, I think you're actually gonna have to.
I think it would stand up in a court of law, honestly. I, I think it's just confusing to the average person that flips it open and, but let's see. The definition says, retail marijuana store, any entity licensed to purchase retail marijuana from a retail marijuana cultivation facility, and to purchase retail marijuana products from a retail marijuana product manufacturing facility, and to sell retail marijuana and retail marijuana products to consumers.
Right, well, that's pretty straightforward. So, where does the, where's the variable of the adult use and recreational use come in?
It doesn't, other than unless you flip to the state law, which I don't have in front of me. I'm sorry. But I, the state law, I did look that up. That was the definition. I, I think they've changed some things, um, but, um, and, you know, I don't know if a moratorium is required right now. Um, I mean, at this point, I haven't received an application. If I did receive an application, it would, it would fall under what we have right now.
Have you looked at the language in the definition of any of the other towns?
I have not. I can't, I haven't.
Why don't we add that to your ever-growing list of things to do, and just kinda table that and see what the language looks like in some of the other towns and parallels? Do what the cool kids are doing.
So, well, there's nothing wrong with looking what other towns do. I do it a lot.
Yeah.
You know, um...
Especially how long they've been established for.
Yeah.
Like, I know Rockland, Main Street Rockland is a weed shop right on Main Street, like...
So does Ellsworth.
Yeah.
So does Bangor.
So...
They're, they're all around. So does Verona.
Right, how does...
Through, that's Main Street.
Yeah.
Like, how does it happen and happen well for them?
Yeah, you know, I was surprised, um, I was talking to actually reporter for Bangor Daily, um, and he was telling me that in Hancock County, the only adult-use marijuana store is in southwest harbor. It's the only one. Even that one in Ellsworth is only medical marijuana.
Oh.
Interesting.
Even today, that's the only one?
That's the only one, yeah.
I guess...
In, in Hancock County.
Yep.
Now, I, I'm pretty sure that some of the stores in Bangor sell it. I'm not a hundred percent, but I think they do. But that, that reporter, his beat is Hancock County, and so he knows Hancock County. Yeah. So, it sounds to me like you guys are supportive of, uh, moratorium until we can discuss this further, and look at changes that might need to be made.
That would be...
That would be the right way to approach it.
Yeah, that's, that's my personal stance on it, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Um...
What's the reasoning behind that it has to be a ground floor only?
I think, again, this was two thousand eleven, um, but I think they were, they didn't know what to expect, first of all, but they primarily wanted to keep it right where the police could see it. They wanted it to be during hours when we had patrols going, you know, nine to five, Monday through Saturday. They wanted it in a very obvious conspicuous place where it can be seen, it's out in the open, it's not hidden on the backside of a building.
Kind of basement rooms and all that.
Yeah.
I mean, the visible...
Third floor apartment accessible only for a year type of thing.
More so than that, though, at the time, that was the big, that was around the same time that, uh, there were some empty buildings that were proposed as apartments that were getting shot down on the ground floor, and that was a big push for Main Street to be ground-floor business, second and third floor apartments. That was the big, that was the big push around that time for that, too, so it might have just paralleled that scenario. Businesses on the ground floor, period.
Yeah, somebody suggested that they should be right near the ice cream parlor or something.
Well, one-stop shopping, yeah.
Exactly. But they're not allowed to smoke it there, and they can't smoke it till they get home, so I don't know if that really helps, and so, you know, I...
Well, he can legally mix it with the ice cream, couldn't he, because it's ground floor, because of all...
Uh, you have to have a medical marijuana license and...
All the kinds.
And then this food, I think, anything that's edible has to be...
Obviously, the others can only be consumed home, that's okay, no?
Yeah, but they have to go through testing and all that, too, and I don't know if you could do that with ice cream. I don't know. I don't really know much about marijuana, so... I, I've learned a lot dealing with the fellow on Verona and the fellow on Orland.
Yeah.
But...
Very good.
So, that's where we're at. Any other thoughts or concerns, or...
No.
So, the other three ordinances don't have to go to the planning board, but they're, um, adding some language to the sign ordinance, um, pretty much to, to answer questions that I've been receiving from some of the big corporations like McDonald's, Family Dollar, Dunkin' Donuts. Um, all these places have been doing remodels and putting up new signage, Hannover as well, and they all wanna know, I see the sign regulations for freestanding signs out by the road, but it doesn't say anything about the signage that's attached to the building.
Mm-hmm.
So, I added standards for signs that are attached to the building, which, again, I pretty much got them all from other towns, what they're doing. Um, Brewer and Ellsworth were big, were where I got most of that.
Yeah.
And then, uh, one of the ordinances is the personnel policy. It was a language thing about how to deal with complaints from the public, um, something that Sue said needed to be in there for some type of insurance thing, I don't know.
Okay.
Um, that one got tabled because there was some language in there that they didn't like, but that language came right from the police contract. Um, so I said, if you don't like it, then you probably, you probably should change the police contract, the fire contract, and the public works contract, because that same language that you don't like is in all three of those contracts.
Right.
Um, so, and they're negotiating contracts right now, so it's the perfect time to fix that.
Right, it is. I was gonna say, I checked the language on the last time, I, I hope it wasn't what I did.
It had been in there, it's been in there for at least three or four contracts back, as I looked.
Has it?
It's just something that nobody looks at, it just stays there and keeps rolling over. It's just language about how complaint from the public about an officer will be dealt with.
Oh.
Um, anyways, hopefully Sean and Dave are, are looking at that and revising it, because that...
They'll do a job.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't really involve me, other than I pointed out, because Sean was one of the ones at the meeting that was like, I don't like that language, and I'm like, it's in your contract.
Yeah.
So, um, and what was the fifth corner? The fifth one was, oh, the festival ordinance. I don't know if you watched the town council meeting, but we, uh, are working with all the department heads to try and come up with new rules on how the festivals, um, are handled as far as security. Right now, the application says, do you require police, uh, for security? And they can simply just check no, and that's that.
How about the insurance?
Uh, we updated that. Insurance, it said they had to have a four hundred thousand dollar policy. May municipal said that's not enough anymore, it needs to be a million, so we upped that.
For, for what?
For the, any event.
Liability insurance, and the town has to be named as a, as a, um...
Okay.
Payee or whatever, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, now, police determine if police are needed, and if police are needed, the event organizer has to pay for the police to be there.
Yeah.
Unless it's a nonprofit, then we know we donate one police officer and two firefighter EMS to the event, um, and then anything that's required after that, they have to pay for.
That's actually generous.
Oh, yeah? Well, our goal is not to try and shut down these events or anything, but we can't do everything for free.
No, we can't. Not for, not for a pro, for profit type deal.
Right, exactly.
Doesn't make any sense.
So, but even a non-for-profit, if, if, you know, if they're bringing in thousands of people, and we have to have all kinds of firefighter and police here at overtime rates...
Yeah.
Somebody has to pay for that.
Somebody has to pay.
So, we also put language in about providing porta-potties, um, paying for waterfront staff, whether it be Ron or whoever replaces Ron. You know, if they're having to do overtime on the weekends to pick up trash, because the event is generating lots of trash...
Right.
Or cleaning the bathrooms because of that, restocking the bath, all that stuff. Somebody's gotta pay for his...
That's all a good point.
So, we worked on this a lot, we had a lot of meetings with the different department heads.
Yeah.
Public safety, and, I think we've, I think we've got it pretty good.
Excellent.
So, but again, that, that doesn't need plain word approval, but that's what's going on. So, those were the five ordinances we talked about Thursday night, and you can watch that meeting online if you want.
Yeah.
Um...
Probably will. Here's the language issue.
Uh, it was, it had to do with, um, it says something about the complainant and the employee that the complaint was about, and the manager, and in the police contract says, the union rep, all will meet together, and they didn't like that. They didn't think that the complainant and the, and the person the complaint is about should be together.
Right.
There should be an investigation, and then there should be a private meeting of the employee for discipline or whatever needs to take place, and, and I don't disagree with them.
Yeah.
But Sue, Sue said, take the language from the contract and put it in our policy, and I said, I, okay, and I did, except for I took the union stuff out, because...
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think some of that wording may have come from the, you know, state law, where you have the right to face your accuser.
It could be.
And I, I, I agree with what you're saying, that I, a lot of the times at the beginning, it's just not proper for both sides to be there in the same room. I, I, I agree with that, I just...
Yep, well, they'll rewrite it however they see fit, or they won't, I don't know. But the personnel policy for, for us, the one that I'm writing, that's gonna be changed.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that one got tabled until I can bring new language to them.
So, we gave you just a little bit more homework, nothing too bad.
Uh, I've gotta create this moratorium for the next council meeting for them to do a first reading. It's, it's just like an ordinance, they have to do a first reading, and then they have to have a public hearing and a second reading.
Yeah.
I, I thought that maybe there was a way to do it as an emergency and do it quickly, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
But, again, if they get their application in, it's, it's retroactive anyway, so...
Yeah, okay.
I don't, like I said, I don't think these rules that are there right now are horrible or anything.
No, but they just...